We'll open up for any public comment on all of our sendery boards that we have. The air quality district, that is not one of them, that's what I sit on, you can't comment any of those things but any of the others. Seeing no one here, close the public comment on the five o'clock session. And Mr. Attorney?
Yes, may I pro tem, Rochelle, we need to go in a closed session, discuss potential litigation to potential cases pursuant to government code 54956.9b. And the record should reflect this is a regular meeting, not only the council, also of the Southern California Rail Authority, Airport Authority, Water District, and Redevelopment Agency.
We'll adjourn at this time. This session of the Victorville City Council Meeting, we'll start with an invocation by Pastor Kendall White of the High Desert Seventh Day Adventist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Police Chief Reynolds.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you. Lord, in this time and this season of faith, Lord, may we look for you for guidance. Lord, may we look to you for decisions and Heavenly Father, may we not forget you. Lord, we lift up this city council to you, Lord. Help them as they make decisions for the future for the high desert. Help them to remember all the people who are involved and that they may not forget their duties. Bless them and keep them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We'll have a presentation for recycling week, and I'd like to have Rowett, Liff,
Sounds good. Okay. I'm Frat Liff, and I work for the city of Victorville's recycling program. I'm really excited to be here tonight and to be here to present these awards, help present awards. I want to tell you, I've had a really great opportunity working with many of the Victorville schools during this third annual Victorville Recycles Week. And it was really great to go to the schools to meet so many of their staff and students, teach them about recycling, and to see all the things that they are doing to help make our city such a great place to live. To tell you a little bit about recycle week event, schools were set up to participate in specific recycling activities during the first week of November. And this was to raise recycling awareness and to earn as many points as possible for a chance to win much-needed funds for their school. It was really amazing to see them participate in classroom recycling presentations, recycling assemblies, where they had a blast playing the clean trash relay game. And then they participated in recycling drives to collect bottles and cans. And they also collected old athletic shoes and newspapers. And then it was exciting to see them actively participating in the poster and recycled sculpture contests. Just to give you a quick idea of what we accomplished in our schools, citywide during recycle week, 21 Victorville schools, kindergarten through 12th grade, participated in recycle week activities. Over 4,600 students were taught about the recycling program by the city recycling program in their classrooms or at assemblies. And then approximately 750 posters were received and several very creative sculptures were brought to the city hall. 1,255 feet of old athletic shoes were recycled and 14,406 bottles and cans were redeemed for cash. And all of these reusable materials were diverted from going to the land. Yeah, awesome. At the end of recycle week, schools brought posters and sculptures to city hall and final recycle week reports, which were submitted to the recycle week judging committee. Because of this, we are here tonight to recognize our recycle week 2009 winners. Okay. To begin, we would first like to thank Bertech Waste Industries, who is the recycling hauler for the city of Victorville, and for sponsoring the funds for many of the awards tonight. And here to help us present these cash awards, I would like to introduce Mike Aragon. And he's going to come up here with us. And he's the vice president of Bertech. So thank you very much, Mike, for being here with us tonight. Okay. Our first award tonight goes to our top points recycling school. This is a $500 award sponsored by Bertech. And I would say this school was very creative and dedicated recyclers. Not only did they participate in every points-earning activity during recycle, they also collected many extra items to recycle, such as CDs, DVDs, Capri Sun packets, VHS tapes, cell phones, ink cartridges, and made all of their recycle week advertising on old white sheets to reuse next year instead of making posters out of paper. Let's give a hand to our most excellent recyclers, our top points winner, Vista Verde Elementary. Woo! Good job! That's right, I raise my hand. Okay, we will award three schools. These schools were selected as random drawing winners. And what we do is, once we select the top points-winning school, we select random winners from the rest of the schools. And I just want to say that each of these schools did an awesome job recycling. And so our lucky winners tonight are first, the Academy of Performing Arts. Come on up. Woo-hoo! Good job! Our second school tonight.
Got to get this down to us.
Congratulations. Okay, our second winning random drawing school, Village Elementary School. Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, and the third school for our random drawing is Mountain View Montessori. Come on up. Congratulations. Okay, the fifth award tonight goes, we should have rehearsed, no. The fifth award tonight goes to the grand prize poster winner. And this $250 cash award, that's a lot of money, is generously sponsored again by Bertech. Thank you very much. And selected from all first-place poster entries from each school, kindergarten through 12th grade, we would like to award this student for her outstanding art and recycling message. And this award goes to Karen Castaneda Carrasco. She's in 5th grade from Hollyvale Elementary. Woo! Congratulations! Woo! And just to note, their winning art is on display in the foyer. Okay, and then their winning art will also be displayed in the Mall of Victor Valley the entire month of December, so congratulations. Okay, our sixth award this evening goes to the grand prize sculpture winner. This is also a $250 award sponsored by Bertech. And selected from all first-place sculpture entries from each school, kindergarten 12th through, or kindergarten through 12th grade, this student has been selected for his awesome art made from recyclable materials. We'd like to invite Josiah Battles, who's in 5th grade at Sixth Street Prep, to come on up. Good job! There you go. Very cool. Okay, the seventh award tonight, we're almost there, is the CRV Award. This is the California Redemption Value Award, which goes to the school that collected the most bottles and cans during recycle week. And recycle week was November 2nd through 6th, and this award is sponsored by a grant from the State of California Department of Conservation. I have to tell you a special thing about this school. They have not only raised over $4,000 from recycling bottles and cans over the last four years, but they have also donated almost all of it to the Ronald McDonald. So we would like to award the Academy of Performing Arts and Foreign Language. Congratulations. So awesome. Finally, this is our last award. This reuse issue contest this year, and we were to raise $500 for this award, and nobody knows who the winner is until right now tonight. And they are actually here, not knowing that they're here for this. But the various sponsors that we'd like to thank is CRNR, a recycling C-Mex, and the Department of Conservation Grant. This school collected the longest line of shoes to recycle during recycle week at 275 feet. Their line of shoes was lined up on the perimeter, quite the sight to see. This award goes to Vista Verde Elementary. Woo! They did a really great job. Thank you.
Wait, wait, don't we?
You get in the picture, finally.
I just want to say, as a former teacher, obviously, I'm extremely proud of the participation all levels of the schools do in this community. That is incredible, the teachers, the schools, and the students, especially the students. They're the ones that are going to pass it on. But I also have to say that we have one of the greatest partners in our waste management in this valley, in Bertech. And they are there for every program we have. So they're an incredible partner, incredible company. You know, for the complaints that come in, you know, usually it's for law enforcement or some of the other things, you know you're in trouble if you've got complaints coming in on your trash collections and things like that. We never get any complaints. That's how good they are. And most cities can't make that statement. So thank you, sir, very much. And thank all of you. We have one more presentation, certificate of appreciation, and Captain Reynolds, if you'd come up and make that presentation, sir? Oh, you might have to turn that on.
I'm going to stand over here so I don't turn my back to anyone. Roberta Acevedo, would you step forward, please? I'm very proud this evening to recognize Roberta Acevedo for her efforts. The city council, the city of Victorville is very proud of what she did. About a month ago, Roberta works with autistic children. And she was taking a four-year-old autistic child for a walk through a neighborhood in Victorville. She saw three young men, appeared to be gang member types, attempting to kick in a front door of a residence. They couldn't kick the front door in, so they made their way around back. She knew that something was definitely wrong, used her cellphone to dial 911, and gave a very accurate description of the individuals and their vehicle to the dispatcher. Our police officers arrived and very quickly were able to locate these guys, take them into custody, get back all of the property that they had stolen from the home. And it was quite a bit of stuff, because there was three of them really ransacking this home. But we don't see this often enough, and this is one of those deeds that I think needs to be rewarded. Roberta, you're the type of person that is helping us take back our neighborhoods. You're the type of neighbor that we all want to live next door to. And you're a really good citizen. And her immediate concern was her four-year-old client, that she had to get back into the house and make sure that the child was safe before she got involved further. And I think if she didn't have that four-year-old with her, in speaking with her on the phone, she said, "And I would do it again." So I think she probably would have went over there and tried to take these three guys on herself, and thank God she didn't do that. But excellent job in recognition of your courageous deed from the city of Victorville. Signed by our mayor, Rudy Cabrealis, dated 12/10/09. Thank you for your job well done.
I would just do it again if the opportunity came up, and hopefully it doesn't. But if it does, and I'm around and have a phone, then I'll make the call.
That concludes the presentation portion. Now we'll now go into the public comment. I'll open up the, all the boards that we sit on, the city, the redevelopment agency, the airport authority, the rail authority, and the library. And I'll open up public comments. And to all of those, you need a card turned in, please, so that we might be able to follow up. We have three minutes, and we are not going to respond to your comments in this section of the agenda here. And I'll take them in the order that I have.
May I pro tem, Rochelle? May I pro tem, Rochelle, if I may? I just want to report from the five o'clock closed session, there was no reportable action, for the record.
Five o'clock meeting, no reportable action. Thank you. Norm, we got that in before you even got up here.
Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller. And I was thinking about something the other day. The way things have been going a little bit, I wanted to bring it to mind. In the past, I know that, as I understand it, you've been having two weeks of vacation every Christmas holiday time. And I was thinking about the problems we've had in the past with laying off employees and everything else. I was looking at the warrants, and I see that it costs about $1 million every two weeks for employees' salaries. So if you leave off these employees, again, for two weeks, that means you just threw away $1 million with no return on it. So maybe with the situation the way it is today, with the economics and everything like that, maybe you should relook at that or decide to do it a different way. And just one other point is, it looks like it's getting a little hot in the kitchen. Thank you.
Next card I have is Raymond Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name's Raymond Herrera, founder of We the People. And I'm here to speak to you about what Plato once stated about the body politic being the most moral, the most intellectual, and those that hold the most integrity in utopian society. Recently, you know, I've been politically active here in Victorville, actually all the way across America. One of your predecessors has been out there also. And I don't find him so moral. I don't find him to be a mere reflection of this city council. And he's also a city school board member. And I find that people like Felix Diaz, this is what's wrong with this society, what's wrong with our schools. Felix Diaz does not address the issues when he's talking to me about what's politically correct or not. He obviously likes to play the race card, and he's accused me of many different things. But mainly Felix Diaz has been battering the city of Victorville and its constituents. And to me, Felix Diaz represents diversity. Diversity is a weapon. I've never seen Felix Diaz celebrate an American holiday. It's always slanted towards Cinco de Mayo or some kind of Veterans Day that involves Hispanics or whatever. If we are a true melting pot in America, and people of integrity and morals and high intelligence are to be our body politic, I think that Felix Diaz is a poor example. To have him quoted in the paper saying that he was a former city council member, city school board member, attacks the American creed, the American creed that I put forward to the American people. We are in dire straits in this country this day. Our country has been invaded by illegal aliens. And I, for one, have taken a political stance, a moral political stance, to stand for the American creed, that flag and the country our fathers fought for and defended. Felix Diaz is out there, and like I said, if he's a mirror reflection of this body politic, then it's a pretty pathetic city. God bless.
Next card I have is Robin Haveston. Robin Haveston.
Bidston, Robin Bidston.
Say that again, ma'am.
Bidston, the H is silent.
Oh, the H is silent, okay.
I too wanted to address the issue of school board member Felix Diaz. I would like to make three points. And first of all, we are here to just encourage voters to consider not casting a vote for Mr. Diaz in November 2010. First of all, I don't, there were not very many people at the October 15th Victor Valley Union High School District meeting. The test scores of the district were reviewed, and my jaw was on the ground. Forty percent, fifty percent. The overall score for English was in the 50% range. Now, I'm going to dovetail that with a school board member, Felix Diaz, who in September advocated for Spanish billboards in the high desert, in Hispania, in Apple Valley. Why was this school board member in the newspaper, he was on TV advocating for Spanish-language billboards, when the student scores are in the 40% range in English? Secondly, I would just like to see a school board member that promotes the American culture. Again, a school board member who says, you know what, let's get these English scores up in this district. And we have information here on the flyer, if any voters are interested. Again, we're asking for voters to consider not voting for Felix Diaz to be reelected to the school board. On Monday, the San Bernardino Sun, San Bernardino Sun ran a front-page article on Mr. Herrera and his activism. It focused a lot on his service in Vietnam. I'm going to leave this with the city council members to read. And in this article, Felix Diaz waits in, the school board member chastising Mr. Herrera, saying that he's a self-hating individual.
I've been here about 15 seconds.
Okay. And again, we're just here to encourage people to study who Felix Diaz is. We do not think he's good for the school district. We want to see someone that promotes the American culture and someone that will get those English scores up above the 40 and 50% range for the students in the Victor Valley Union High School District. Thank you.
I have one more card. Now, there's two items here. Michelle Medina, are you on public comment and then number 12 later on? Or just number 12? You want to speak now? Okay. Then you want number 12 as well? Oh, okay.
I have, actually, there's 26 pages that are all different. Yeah, there's 26 pages for the council to thumb through, if possible. Basically, Mr. Rochelle, back in 2004, 2005, back when you were mayor, we put this ordinance together for...
Would you pull your microphone down just a little bit? There you go.
Sorry. Back in 2004, 2005, we put together this ordinance for the Section 8, for the rental, all the issues as far as investors, if they're renting a property, they have to get a business license. If the police are called numerous times, they're a nuisance, they lose that business license and need to get rid of the tenant. And on this particular papers that I've given, there's 26 letters from the HOA, and I'm on the board of the HOA. These letters are going to both the tenant and the owner. I've contacted the owner, who's clearly told me these people are on Section 8. Police have been called just since October 28th, six times. Captain Reynolds has been out there for them, riding dirt bikes through our park. I have letters from the HOA that they're causing, costing us, they're breaking the fence in our park, it's a private park, riding their dirt bikes through the park, causing damage as far as the grass, the trees, and things like that, which is costing the rest of the homeowners. However, these are renters, and the owner's not doing anything about it. This goes back to the issue back when I used to come and talk to the council about the slum lords that are not doing anything about it. And basically, it's bringing down the community, the neighborhood, and how are we supposed to go about with this ordinance if nothing's being done? I mean, I have, tonight I checked my email list, and I have over 800 emails to George Duran, just on rentals, Section 8, and front lawns, the maintenance. It would be nice if maybe there was someone else, maybe if the city was able to hire someone, or maybe possibly give someone their job back, just to oversee it, because it seems like no one else is doing anything. And I've been doing this for the city for, since 2004, even while I was working, down the hill, working 60-hour weeks. I still find time to do something like this, just because of the fact that I live here. However, not much has changed. It seems like the only person that's doing anything or bringing up anything is myself, and that's all I'm seeing. And I'm sure I'm not the only person that lives here, but the people that I do talk to within schools feel the same way. A lot of people are just really, don't want to say anything, don't want to do anything, and that's just not my personality. So I'm just asking, those, the papers I gave there for you, I have my own copies. If you can just please do something, more so than just have an ordinance that has holes, basically.
Time's running up, but let me make sure I got the question right. It sounds to me like you're saying that you would like the city to consider a overlying coordinator of the business license program and responds into the Section 8 and rental housing? Is that the thrust of your comment?
That's part of it. I mean, if that's possible, that would be great. We'd offer someone else, maybe within the city, their job back, or something like that. However, it seems like it needs to have someone oversee it.
Right.
It doesn't seem like much is really being done, because I've sent, I've taken pictures and things from the past are still the same.
Time is up. I get to gesture your conversation, and we will get, I get a response back out to you, run it through the code enforcement and the proper department, they're here, and we'll get back at you on that comment.
Right, thank you.
That's the, that's all of my public comment section. Anyone else before we move on to the regular agenda? I got one card from Norman Miller for number four, but other than that, okay. We'll close the public comment section, we'll move into the regular agenda items. Agenda item number one is the library. And excuse me, we've done number one, there's no present, there's no revised agenda. So I'll close the library agenda. Nothing more to be said there. So I'll close the library agenda, nothing more to be said there. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and the Airport Authority, I'll turn that over to Mr. Caldwell, who's the chairman of those two boards.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rothschild. There are no other items for either the Rail Authority or the Airport Authority, other than to acknowledge that both of those agencies will be adjourned to a workshop Tuesday, December 8th, 5:00 PM, these chambers. That would conclude both the Rail and the Airport Authority.
Moving into the redevelopment agency, item number, item number two is revised, any revisions to the agenda, nothing. Going into the written requests, communications here, we have a request to affirm the authorization of the executed purchase agreement, and you have the attending documents there, the amount of this purchase agreement, and actually, three and four are philosophically connected, even though they're different in some sense, but any questions on number three? Entertain a motion to...
I'll move authorization of the three items.
Second. Been moved and seconded? Item number four is a request to award contract to KNC Construction of Hispania for the rehabilitation of these properties under the same state grant, and there's that federal grant as well. And I'll entertain a motion to approve award to contract to KNC Construction.
Go move.
I have nothing else under the redevelopment agency. Moving into the Victor Valley Water District Agenda, item number two is any revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
Item number three is a request to authorize staff to enter contract with Tyler Technologies for the implementation of the enterprise management systems, including integrated systems, upgrades, basically our software and computer systems that are about 10 years old, which in the computer age is old. So anyway, it'll cost about 1.5 million, 1.55 million to be exact. Entertain a motion for approval?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we going to eventually integrate this to our entire city, the new program?
Doug, if you could. That's the intent. At this moment, we're focusing on the billing and the financial system portions of it, but as we evaluate that, we'll also be looking at rolling into other options that are available under this technology for essentially the same cost, for all the other systems that we have citywide. It just depends on, on the timing of that. Right now, we just want to focus on those areas that, that have been problematic in the past.
Be the water, and not the finance? Would it be going into Finance Department also?
It will be, yes, because that, that portion is also required in order to, to do the billing.
Thank you.
I think all the tools that they've developed over the last 10 years probably integrates all of those departments a lot better than we did before, under people's... Okay, so we've got a motion, oh, excuse me, Norm Miller, and that was, I beg your pardon.
Apologize for that. I'm not sure, I couldn't hear too good back there if the question was asked or not, but I have a, want to lead up to a question I have about this, and that is the Baldi Mesa Water District. As you know, some years ago, you joined in with the city of Victorville, and we had spent some money to pay down our standby fees, and that money was taken away from us and used to do another master plan for the Baldi Mesa Water District area. My question is, if we have this $20 million that we're supposed to be loaning to the wastewater plant, and now you want to spend another $1.5 million of the Water District's money, why couldn't some of that money been used to pay for the master plan revision, and use the money that was originally sent to pay down the standby fees? And that leads up to this thing here, is that, is this money coming from the Water District for the city's use, or is it strictly for the Water District's use? And if it is for the city's use, is it going to be paid back to the Water District?
I have Reggie Johnson or Cox, one of you.
Let me give it a shot. Yeah, let me give it a shot. At this point, for the last two years now, the Water District has been using the system that the city owned. At this point, the system is being purchased by the Water District. As we integrate it eventually into, and the city also uses the system, there is an intent to pick up those costs for the city as well.
Is the money that was, the standby fees, is there still standby fee money available?
That one I'm going to have to toss over to either Reggie or Steve regarding the standby
Standby fees are being used to pay down bonds and other indebtedness incurred by Baldi Mesa, just by, just those standby fees that are collected from the former district area.
Has the bond one?
Not yet.
Is any of that one?
No, no, can't do that. We can only use that for infrastructure and improvements for water quality within Baldi, the old Baldi Mesa area.
Is that being revised?
Well, actually, most of those monies were already paid for, or used for the arsenic treatment. That's where, the vast majority of that has been used. Some of it's left over a little bit, and will be, continue to be used for some of the quality and distribution, but just in the former Baldi Mesa area.
Any, any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval?
That completes the Victorville, yeah, the Victorville Water District Agenda.
Mayor Protem Rothschild, if I may, just for the record, apparently due to a computer glitch, because you're sitting in Mayor Cabral's seat, your votes are being reflected on the record as Mayor Cabral's, and I want the record to reflect that those votes are in fact your votes, just so we're clear, public entities, not, it's just the computers.
You'll make that correction.
Reflect it later.
All right.
Reflect it later, but any of the votes are attributable to you.
All right, that completes that agenda. Moving into the city council agenda, item number two is a revision, any revisions to the city agenda? Okay, moving on to number three, the consent calendar. Anybody wish to withdraw on it? For who, second, who's got a second? There we go. Agenda item number, agenda item number four is a request to ratify the contract for the allocation of funds for the University of California Berkeley Traffic Safety Center Checkpoint Program. And this one here, make sure that there's any requirement, there is any money associated with that one, is there? Is that?
No money, because it's taken care of by the grant, council needs to ratify the contract for the allocation of the money for the sobriety checkpoint. Thanks to Cliff Reynolds and his department for paying these funds.
You did that, yeah. All right, move, move for approval? That's a yes. Number five, to adopt Resolution 09100 entitled a resolution, City Council, City of Victorville giving approval and authorization to destroy certain records for the Finance Department, Cashier Division, Public Works Development Department, and IT Division. Approval? And companion item here, someone to speak, number six, request to adopt Resolution 09101, resolution by the City Council, City of Victorville adopting a State California City Clerks Association Local Government Records Retention Guidelines and superseding City Council Resolution 06178. Move for approval? Bye.
Move for approval?
Okay, agenda item number seven is to approve the funding of the repower paint striping vehicle, number 31232, with the new Tier 3 requirements for the amount of $25,451.25 for compliance with engine PM emissions requirements.
I wonder what would happen if we all refused to do this?
I was, I'm going to make a comment after these things here.
I know, my husband and I are really concerned. What's going to cost us this opportunity? I'll move for approval.
Yeah, the fact is, we have no, no choice in the matter.
I know.
The sad thing is, the air, the local air quality district has no choice, and I'll second it just for the sake of cover, because I sit on the air quality board. I was going to say at the end of these street, but let me say it now, this is another unfunded mandate from the state, with their head in the sand, and it's terrible what they're doing, and it's all under the guise, if you'll notice, of the global warming concept. AB 32 was passed a couple of years ago, and it was to save the planet, and so California will take the lead in saving the planet, and therefore, this onerous rules and regulations, thousands of dollars are hitting the private sector. Now on our agenda here, we have items here that we have to change and fix, thousands of dollars to the local citizens in Victorville, and this is just Victorville, count all 500 cities in the state of California doing this in multiple ways. There's millions upon millions of dollars having zero effect on you, except to take that money out of our pockets, away from our parks, away from our streets, away from our police and fire, and that's a shame. And I'm hoping that this crisis, this email thing, I mean, it's too bad it took a hacker to jump into there and expose the fraud that has been going on. Started with the United Nations just flipped into this country, and California picked up their baton, and it's crazy. So I'm for one, I'm going to take this issue to our local air quality district, and see if we can move back up the food chain. Senator Renner has certainly been one of those strong advocates in repealing AB 32. Initially hasn't said, let's just repeal it, he says, hey, put a stop to it for a few years until we get our economy going. I say repeal it because it's no, it's a non-issue. You've manufactured something that has no science or engineering to it. And here on our agenda tonight, you're seeing exactly what is happening. Those numbers should not be on, out of our budget, except the state mandates rolls down through the air district, right down to us, right down to Joens, private company, and everybody else that does, bumps into this stuff. It is ridiculous, and I hope you take to the bank that somebody that votes for this stuff ought to be voted out of office. Anyway, that's, what was that, it was number seven, it's none of my speech, okay. Number eight, a request approval of funding to repower two vehicles with two Tier 3 requirements, a vacuum truck and a street sweeper, in the amount of $53,723.30 for compliance with engine PM 10 emission requirements. Let me move.
I guess I'll have to.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to do this stuff.
Second.
I hate it. And number nine, a request the authorization to execute the memorandum of understanding, MOU, authorizing the Greener Dawn to partner with the city, authorized the Greener Dawn Inc. to prepare and submit the state admissions, state energy program grant application. It's probably a good thing to do, so I'll entertain a motion. Hey, agenda, that completes the end of the agenda, anything else? We're moving to council comments.
I just want to comment that I had the opportunity to take a tour of the Dr. Pepper Snapple facility today. It's not clear, in my mind, whether it's the largest building in the city of Victorville or the second largest, but whatever, it is huge. And you go inside of it, and you see the technology that is being installed in this giant structure. It is really impressive. We have been beat up pretty bad for our decision to go forward with Dr. Pepper and with the accompanying wastewater treatment facility. I think it's important that we not lose sight of the fact that that facility will be operational next year, and it's going to generate a significant amount of tax increment revenue, and it's going to create something in excess of 200 jobs, and they're already talking about some add-ons and additions to that facility, in addition to Plastipack, which is going to be another 200-plus jobs. So I just wanted to comment that, you know, yeah, we've been beat up some, but you know, for the people who are going to get employment out of this, they told me they had 1,500 applications just for a forklift operator's job, 1,500 applications. These are all good-paying jobs, and it's going to be a big help to our community, and when Plastipack comes on board, it likewise will be a significant generator of tax increment revenue and the creation of jobs. And the reason I bring this up is not just because we, I think, need to comment on the positive things that are happening as a result of those decisions, but the folks that were there that I met with today from Plano, Texas, are very, very pleased with the city of Victorville and the effort that we have put in to get them to where they are, and they are specifically pleased with the folks that they've had to work with in the Economic Development Department, the Engineering Department, and the Public Works Department. They went out of their way to pay compliments, and they specifically pointed out the names of Keith Metzler and Sean McGlade. So I thought the council should know that guys are working in the vineyards, and they're doing good things, and it's creating a good image for our city, so I just wanted to share that with the council.
I know, Mike, you were looking, you were gunning for that, that record tonight, but I kind of wanted to take a moment to reflect over my first year here in this seat. Tomorrow will be one year officially.
I'm just kidding.
And I'll tell you, I came into this with illusions of grandeur, that I thought I was going to be able to, to do a lot of good, and unfortunately, we've seen some of the worst financial times I'm sure the city has ever seen, although I haven't been in this seat as long as Councilman Caldwell, I'm sure he probably could concur with that. However, there are a couple of issues that have continued to come to my attention from residents of the city, numerous complaints from people who live throughout the Victor Valley, and that continues to deal with the red light camera system. I have encouraged our captain, Cliff Reynolds, along with city engineer Sean McGlade, risk manager Chuck Bouquet, to speak with the folks from Redflex about what we can do to look at removing some of those cameras. It's my understanding that those talks have kind of fallen apart, and that they're asking them to come back with some more options, but I think in the near future, this council will have before it the option of pulling out some, if not all, of those cameras. If we need to budget for that in fiscal year 2010, 2011, I think we need to do so. It has caused more problems from the public's perception of this council and the decision that was made than I think we all can imagine. So at least the number of emails and complaints I get about it on a daily basis lead me to believe that we ought to reconsider that decision. Secondly, it has become quite amazing to me, as I visit with our city manager and staff on a daily or even weekly basis, the number of issues and problems that we continue to find based upon decisions that were made in the past, not necessarily by this council, but by, by folks at staff level, and, and even former, our former city manager. I, I feel that there's, there's this continued public perception that we're not doing our job to be as transparent as we possibly can be, and in light of that, and all the various contracts that were apparently entered into without council approval, I think that, that I'd like to request that city staff explore and bring back to the council an actual firm doing a forensic audit to look at all financial issues, including accounts payable, payroll, all of our various contracts that we've entered into for whatever reason, and if we need to be getting out of those, if there's any criminal or fraudulent activity, we need to make sure that that's out there in front of the public, and that we're willing to... to make sure that that's out there in front of the public and that we're willing to disclose that. I think that if nothing comes of it, then it shows that nothing was done wrong, and not to put any discount on what our city auditors have done, but it's not their job to do forensic auditing, and I'm concerned that they miss things, and I think that, and not things that they wouldn't normally look for. So in a forensic audit, those types of things are looked for, and that's what I'd like to request city staff bring back before us.
Okay, I'll make it brief. I asked Curly to ask Keith for a complete rundown of how much we've spent on the EB5 program, where the money came from, and what it was spent on. This is all for the workshop, by the way. Okay, thank you. And then also, I'd like to see the bylaws on the nonprofit part of this and what their budget is. But that's all for our workshop for the 8th of this month. That's it, thank you.
I wasn't going to make any comment, but I'll make a comment off of Ryan's request. I don't know what a forensic audit is, quite frankly. I can tell you that, having been on this council in excess of 20 years, Terry's the only one that's got seniority on me, and I haven't been involved in every decision here, but as I sit here right now, there isn't one single thing that I find illegal or in any way out of the normal sync of what we have been doing as business out in a legitimate front. If there's anything that's been secret, it's because there's contracts or deals that were being worked on, and the final solutions would have been detrimental to that project as such. If for some reason the council feels that we forensic audit for the sake of the public's feeling about how our decisions were making, that's fine with me, because I'm not sacrosanct to the point of, "Oh, you've been on the council, you must be okay." No, I've been on the council, but you don't know I'm okay. I'm saying I'm okay, and I think the city's okay. But if there's an independent audit of that nature, that's fine with me, but I can tell you right now, as I'm sitting here right now, there is not one single contract or agreement or thing that we have done that has not been approved by this council collectively. So if they want to debate in terms of discretion, one way versus another, that's certainly a legitimate issue for reasonable people to disagree on. But as I sit here right now, I haven't, I don't, I don't know of anything that should be audited outside of the normal norms that we've already gone through and experienced over this last year and a half, which you were a part of that. So that's my only comment there, but leave it up to the majority of the council to do whatever they like there on this, whatever a forensic audit is. I mean, that's the end of it, unless there's any other comments, okay? Then...
Need to adjourn, though, to the redevelopment agency in the city, to the December 8th meeting.
Got my adjournment orders here. A workshop will be held on Tuesday, December 8th, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers for the Rail Authority and the Airport Authority and the RDA and the City Council to discuss the EB5 program and the public policy discussion on the rail inland port project. So with that, I will adjourn these meetings. Thank you.